Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Business -- Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of October 27, 2016. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business is to resolve to approve the minutes for the business meeting of September 22, 2016, and for the work session business meeting of October 6, 2016.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, I'd like to report that the Treasurers Report for September 2016 is available in the business office. And now that moves us to our first presentation, which is from our external auditors. Jill, do you want to introduce?
We have Dominic Consolo here from our external auditing group, O'Connor Davies, and he'll be giving our 2015-16 year-end annual report.
Good evening. Thank you. May I close this?
Yes, sure.
Great. For those of you who have a copy of the report or are looking at it electronically, I see, I'll be on page 59. The report contains all the funds of the school district, but certainly the most important fund for the Board of Education is the general fund, because it is here that the real property taxes are collected, the state aid, the teacher salaries are expended, along with the operation and maintenance of all the plant, and the employee benefits, of course, and any debt service that the district has incurred. If you look on page 59, you'll see that the -- it's a five-column presentation on the general fund, and it is the scheduled revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, both budget and actual, for June 30, 2016. And on page 60, the very next page, you have comparative amounts for June 30, 2015. The five-column presentation is the original budget, which was the budget adopted by this Board of Education and approved by the voters of the district, with one change, and that change is for any open purchase orders from the year before. So if you look on page 60, that encumbrance column, 585-940, that amount has automatically increased your original budget, so that when those purchase orders became due in 2015-16, there was appropriations there to pay those amounts. The second column's the final budget, takes into consideration any changes made during the year and approved by the Board. The actual results of operations, the third column. Open purchase orders at the end of June 30, 2016, the encumbrances, and then a variance column. And if we look in the original budget column, the third line up from the bottom, you'll see there's a negative number of $1,580,000. And what that means, when the budget was adopted, it was anticipated that you would expend more than you brought in. And since you are required to have a balanced budget, the methodology used by the Board to balance that budget was to use surplus funds, your bank account, from previous years surpluses, to give back to the taxpayers of the district, so that programs would not have to be cut, and the budget would be balanced. In the final budget, you'll see there's no change to that amount, that the amount changed, remained the same in the final budget column. But basically, if the final budget had come out exactly as anticipated, the fund balance of the school district would have dropped by $1,580,000. If you look at the third column, you'll see that not only did the fund balance not drop, but it actually increased by $1.7 million. So certainly a very, very positive year for the Putnam Valley School District. And when you take into consideration the opening encumbrances at year-end of $689,000, you have a budget variance, positive budget variance, of almost $2.6 million. Now where did that budget variance come from? As you know, there are two sides to every budget, a revenue side and expenditure side. And about a third of the way, not even a third of the way down the page, you have your total revenues. You'll see the final budget, anticipated total revenues at almost $47 million. Actual revenues collected were $46.8. So on the revenue side of the budget, you're actually short $175,000. And the shortfall is all due to state aid, some $304,000 shortage in state aid, offset by a positive variance in the charges for services, which is tuition to other districts, by $108,000. Well, basically, the entire variance of $2.7 million, which is approximately 5.5% of your budget, by the way, the expenditure budget, came from the expenditure side of the budget. And you'll see the first category, total general support, there was $464,000 savings coming from central services, which is your operation and maintenance of your plant facilities of $283,000, and special items, which are administrative charges from BOSI's, $168,000. On the instruction side, which is the largest part of your budget, you were able to save some $877,000, coming from also two categories, $432,000 for programs for children with handicapping conditions, and $308,000 from pupil services. And the remainder of the savings come from the employee benefit area, $1,146,000, and that's from your employees' retirement system, your social security benefits, and your health benefits for employees. So just going back to that actual column, as I mentioned before, you were able to add $1.7 million to your fund balance. You started the year with a fund balance of approximately $8.3 million, and you end the year with a total fund balance of $10 million. That fund balance is made up of several different areas, and just turn back one page, And on page 58, we have the general fund balance sheet. This reflects the assets, liabilities, and the fund balance, exactly as they stood on June 30, 2016. You'll see you had total assets of $20.4 million, total liabilities of $10.4 million, and total fund balance, as I just mentioned, of approximately $10 million. And you can see that fund balance is in four separate categories. First category being non-spendable, and what that is, these are prepaid expenditures, administrable accounting, seeing it's very conservative, if there's ever expense that's prepaid, since the cash is no longer available to you, it's considered non-spendable. So $294,000 is non-spendable. You have restricted fund balance, and let me just take you back to page 50 for the breakdown And on page 50, the very first column, the second category, restricted, you'll see the $5,251, and there's 1, 2, 3, six categories under restricted. There's a restricted amount for repairs, you know, for any repairs that may be needed that are non-state-aidable, of $30,000. You have a property loss and liability reserve, which is for any uninsured losses, of $127,000. You have $883,000 set aside for tax sursurary judgments. These are assessments reductions where the district may have to refund property taxes. $1.9 million employee benefit accrued liability, these are amounts of sick and vacation leave accrued by employees that may be due them upon retirements, that amount has been put aside for that purpose. And for retirement contributions, also $1.8 million, this is only for your employee retirement contributions. TRS cannot be funded in a reserve, which is actually your bigger retirement bill. But when the state passed this restriction, they said only for ERS. And finally, future capital projects of a half a million dollars. I believe you have up to...
$10 million over 10 years.
$10 million over 10 years. So this year was your first year, and you were able to put in $500,000 to fund that reserve. So going back to page 58. The third category is your assigned fund balance, and this is money that has been put aside for your open purchase orders at year-end, which I said were $689,000, and what you've given back to the taxpayers to balance the '16-17 budget. The '16-17 budget utilized $1,863,000 of your savings account to balance that budget. And finally, that leaves you with the unassigned. This is your free and clear fund balance, amounts available for cash flow, contingencies, whatever may arise, and that's $1.9 million. The state allows a maximum here of 4% of your subsequent year's budget, and that's approximately where you are. So you are at the best financial condition that the state will allow. That 4%, I think you all know, or should know, if you realize, actually, it's really not a lot of money to have as a contingent amount. I like to just equate it to, if somebody's making $100,000, that the money you have in the bank to cover anything that may arise is $4,000. Not really a lot of money. But it's what the state allows, and it's what you have. Any questions?
What was the amount that you said, the final amount? I know we kept increasing it. The amount that we had returned to the community in the budget was $1.8?
For the '16-17, which is the year you're in, it's $1,863, and for the year past, which is '15-16, it was $994. So you increased that substantially.
And that was the amount that we put in to reduce the budgetary, the tax impact?
The tax, right. I believe a half a million dollars, or $400,000, that was done right up at the point, right to the point of the tax levy, almost.
Yeah, $470,000 reduced the tax levy for the current school year.
Thank you.
Ms. Cohen, has there been an audit committee to review this?
Yes. We presented the same material that we heard tonight, in even more detail, and the audit committee had no questions and no comments. They thought it was a positive report, and they thought that we were in good financial shape, and they approved it.
I did spend about an hour with the audit committee. I figured for the case of briefness here.
No, no, that's fine. Any other questions?
Certainly, the district is in excellent financial condition and well-run at June 30, 2016.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And I want to commend Jill Figueroa for her work, which she spearheads all of the money-making and money-saving and money-saving and money-saving decisions that we make. Thank you, Jill. So that brings us right to our reports for the evening, and let's start with our students' reports.
For a quick update, the fall drama, "Lend Me a Tenor," is coming up, and it opens next week on November 4th and 5th at 7:00 PM, and the 6th at 2:00 PM. Tickets are on sale, and you can purchase them at the box office in the front of the Performing Arts Center at the high school. Students are also very excited to start using the new senior junior lounge that is currently being installed. Students are also really loving Waffle Wednesdays here at the school, so much that they put in a request to have more batter. We also were able to send out a survey to the high school students regarding the later start time at the school. And for sports, girls varsity soccer, boys varsity soccer, and girls varsity field hockey made it to sectionals and put up a great fight to try and win. The girls varsity volleyball made it to sectionals as well, and their first game is tomorrow at home against Pleasantville at 4:30. For swimming, the following made it to what is equivalent to sectionals, Lea Franco, Emily Janziger, Karina Davis, and Alana Rabinoits. Our cross-country team is also going to be running in the county championship this Friday at 4:15 at Bowdoin Park.
Bowdoin.
And our football team will be playing at the Bethel Dale Bowl against Blindbrook this Saturday, and the game is going to be at Valhalla at 3:30 PM. Thank you.
Anybody have any comments? We are very busy students. Is there anyone from the PTA or the PTSA? And that leaves us, Dr. Wells.
I'd like to start this evening just by honoring our Board of Education. This is the Special Week, School Board Recognition Week, and it's observed by more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout the Empire State. And there is a proclamation from the Executive Chamber, from the Governor's Office, to honor our school board members' service, and I'd like to read it, because a great deal of effort, work, commitment, and dedication is represented by the Putnam Valley Board of Education. I've been privileged to work with them now. It's my fourth year, and it's been an honor. So let me read the proclamation. Whereas each year, School Board Recognition Week is observed by the more than 700 school boards and school districts throughout the Empire State, and whereas our state's public education system is designed to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to society and an ever-changing world, and whereas members of local school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education, as they continually strive for improvement, excellent progress in education, recognizing that all children can be successful learners, especially when education is tailored to the individual needs of the child, and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectation to the district by working closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we all hold for today's students and those in the future. And whereas the members of New York State's local school boards respond to the educational needs of communities they serve and help ensure the solid foundation of our school system, in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state's educational system and improve future prospects for our children, and whereas during October 24th through the 28th, 2016, special activities and programs will be held in communities across New York State in observance of School Board Recognition Week, and it is fitting to join in acknowledging the commitment and contribution of members of local school boards, now therefore I Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, to hereby proclaim October 24th to 28th, 2016, as School Board Recognition Week in the Empire State.
Where's my parade?
What's that?
Where's my parade?
Well, we have something special for you that we'd like to present, and this is not using school district funds, I just wanted to make sure that the community knows this. In honor of our Board of Education dedication 2016-17, this will be in our special athletic area, where we're attempting to support our booster club. So, this is it.
Do you have a brick? I love that.
We're thick as a brick.
And as Mr. Cohen has often said, do we get to double our salary this week? Which is zero, by the way, that's a joke. There's now a volunteer position.
I mentioned that in my memo to the community as well. I'd also like to congratulate Natalie Doherty and Melissa Cifaro, who received an honor this week. I was privileged to accompany them. They created a program for our students and were honored by the Careers for People with Disabilities Incorporated organization. And the program that they developed is in partnership with Hudson Valley Hospital. And so our students are able to go there and rotate their work, and they learn all different skills in the hospital. Some of it is in the health field, but some of it is in the clerical field, and in all possible areas that a hospital needs in order to operate. Natalie, do you want to say something?
Sure. You know, a number of years ago, I had this sort of vision that I wanted, you know, our students that would continue after they leave high school, or even during high school, that they can go through a rotation, kind of in one location, but have lots of different opportunities and experiences, and whether it's, you know, the custodial or maintenance end, reception, customer service, the gift shop, you know, the food service industry, you have it all right in one place in the hospital. And, you know, after Melissa and I put together this program and this idea, we went to careers, and they helped us put it all together. But, you know, again, and I meant this sincerely, the night we received this award, without the support from the Board and from this community, we would not be able to accomplish this. So it is a fantastic program for our students. They love it. Their parents have expressed such gratitude for what they've learned, those skills that you can't necessarily teach, but you have to experience to learn. And it is, you know, the hospital, I suspect that some of our students will be offered positions upon their graduation, not through us, it's through them and separate, but that is a hopeful thing. If not, you know, vested in the other services that they receive after they leave us, you know, they're in much better, in a much better place to receive a position that they can certainly continue in, which is fantastic.
Thank you very much, Natalie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to mention that Jeannie Denike was honored by the CTC, the Communities That Care. I wanted to have her photo, and I...
I didn't have that one.
We don't have it. Because her photo...
Wait, I got my phone right here.
Her photo is on the back cover of the Putnam County Communities That Care publication for her efforts on behalf of that organization that really assists us in meeting the needs of our students and in providing excellent services in terms of education and help in the areas of drug and alcohol prevention, use prevention, and so on. So she was especially recognized for her work in organizing the Key Leaders Conference that was so well-attended by members of our community earlier this year to look at priorities for youth mental health and the youth needs in our community, things that are required to support our kids beyond academics. I also want to note that we had a number of students who are part of the Area Allstate this year, Chloe Berger, Cala Cabelli, Casey Doth, Gavin Mitchell, Lauren Rain, Sophia George, Peter Leo, Mariana Silver are all going to be involved in our Allstate. I want to just second the urging of the students to urge the community to go out for the fall drama this year. It looks like it's a comedy and something that people can enjoy. A lot of fun, right?
Yes.
And some music as well?
Yes.
Lot of music. It's about opera, and we have some remarkable talent.
Don't sell it that way. Don't sell it that way. It's not about opera.
No.
Opera is included, and there is a joke.
Okay. Opera is included, sorry. But it is fun. It's not, focuses it on serious met situation. I also wanted to just remind people that we have been, we've completed our LED tests and gotten the results, and that I sent out something this week, posted all the test results on our website, and that we are in the process of developing our remediation contracts and plans, so that we can as quickly as possible complete the project. We do believe that there will be some state aid to help us with this. We're not sure exactly how much, but we think that there will be some aid. I also wanted to note that we're in the middle of a Google initiative in the district, and we've had a trainer here from Lower Hudson, Jennifer Cronk, who is working with our teachers to bring us into a new way of communicating. We've often talked about communication as a major goal for us, and Google Docs and Google Classroom are a way that many teachers throughout the area are communicating with students, collaborating with students, collaborating with other teachers, and the Google Classroom allows for a lot more activity among, and learning among groups. May I ask you, have you been aware of Google Classroom in your classes? Any of your classes use Google Docs?
About four of my classes use Google Classroom. I think it's very great.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. What about you, Erin?
Every single one of my classes uses Google Classroom.
Wonderful. And I didn't, I didn't tell them I was going to ask them this question. I actually was crossing my fingers behind my back. This could really be bad for me, but I had a feeling. You don't know about Google Classroom?
No.
I use it too.
So, I'm excited that you like it, and that it's helpful for you in getting your assignments and knowing what's expected. So we're going to have a presentation here probably next month by the trainer, Jennifer Cronk, to talk to the Board more about what she's been doing, what her insights are about our technology, and I'm very happy to hear how widely this is used. We also are looking at trying out Chromebooks and doing a little pilot with that, because Chrome is a, it's a less expensive product than Apple by half, and it's used now in a number of places, and we're just looking at piloting and seeing how, you know, how that operates. It's a Google product, and it lends itself to the Google Classroom model. I also wanted to mention that I did go to the town board, that I'm sure that's available, that discussion I had with the town board is available on the town TV channel, and that I talked a lot about the initiatives we have here in the district, just, again, advertising a play and so on, to let people know what we're about this first part of the year. I want to thank Dan Turner in particular for his efforts last evening at the PTA/PTSA meeting that was held, where there was a discussion of drug and alcohol use, but also in general about mental health and about the needs of young adolescents. Dan is so enthusiastic in his role as health teacher, and he's stepped up to do some really exciting things on behalf of the parents and the students in our school district. And his PowerPoint will be posted on our website as well, so that others can see what he's talking about in terms of parenting and the needs of young adolescents. I also wanted to say a word about principal appreciation. This is the week and the time, actually, for principal appreciation. I want to note that we're very fortunate with our leadership in the district and about the way people work together. For example, on this Google initiative, just as one project, we were all working together on this, and there is, you know, there is a variety of work being done together, and the principals take ownership and leadership of a great many new initiatives in the district. There's a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of dynamic work being done. Teachers are excited to try new things in the classroom that really engage students. That's our focus, student engagement. So next week, on Tuesday, a momentous day, November 8, we will have our Superintendent's Conference Day, and we are having a number of various meetings on curriculum. We will have the Nova PBS movie for all of us to see, Schools of the Future. There will be an opportunity for collaborative inquiry by our teachers on that, on that film, which really is part of a whole process we've been going through as a district, looking at different ways to think about what schools will be, what the vision is for schools, and how we fit into that vision. Of course, technology is one of the major areas, how technology connects with the curriculum and with instructions.
I just want to add, Dr. Wells, I attended Mr. Turner's presentation last evening, and it was wonderful, besides his presentation being so high-quality, the camaraderie of the parents who were really able to, you know, empathize and commiserate with each other on the challenges of raising middle school and adolescent children, and the laughs that were shared and the worries that were shared. The room was not as full as it should be, so it'd be not, the benefit you get from each other is so huge, that I really encourage parents, I know... parents, I know how busy we all are, but to come out when these events happen. I understand there was a homework presentation a week or so ago by some of our teachers-
Yes.
-as well as a mindfulness workshop. There's, I know it's one more thing to do on the calendar, but they are really invaluable.
They are, and I want, I know about 30 people attended last night, and we had about 18 parents at the third grade homework help night, which is many more than we had last year, where we only had a few. So, we're building, but also, we did videotape that homework help night, and it'll be available for all parents to be able to see and hear from the teachers. This was particularly focused on math, and there was a lot of interest there, too. So, yes, there's a lot of very good, you know, stuff going on in school for parents and for the community.
I'd like to open it up to poll contribution on any of the agenda items, and if there are none, I-
I guess, I guess this would be the time to ask for a little further information on, actually, item number 10 on the consent agenda, I believe, about the curriculum hours for the Journeys program.
Yes.
And I was wondering, a couple of things, this is asking for curriculum hours after the school day.
Yes.
And I was wondering, I just wanted to know more about the Journeys program, how it's going, how many students are in it, and what might be covered after school that couldn't be done during the school day.
Okay, the program, the Journeys program is something, is a program that was developed two years ago, in order to start thinking, have our students thinking about their, their careers, their ideas for their future, their interests, so that they can delve into their interests more, and actually go out into some type of an environment where they would be working with others, in sometimes of a professional group, or creating a project, like making, some of them make movies, some of them do, you know, projects that are going to enhance their knowledge about their talents and their skills and how they can actually produce something. And, you know, students have, last year, we watched some of the student projects, and they were, it was fascinating to see what the students learned about themselves as well as the fields that they were looking at. This idea of an internship for seniors, primarily seniors, these are, these are seniors who are, you know, at the end of their career. What you saw when you watched the projects that they described was that the seniors developed confidence about their ability to actually create something, to follow through something in an independent way. That is, to get, to actually obtain an internship, to obtain a mentor for that, to actually finish a project, and to design it, plan it, learn how to set goals. So, this program is, is developed around that notion of, you know, how do you become an independent person going to, now you're going to college, and so on, so on. It's a choice to take this program. It's actually combined, there's an English class, a separate class taught by one of the teachers, Mr. Lathrow, and there is a participation in government class taught by Mr. Gilroy. And those students in that, who've chosen those classes and to do that, these are required classes, but they've chosen to take those because they, they will use the information they learn there to develop their projects. And they do a lot of writing, they keep a journal, they also do a lot of reading on leadership, on goal-setting, this type of thing, in order to prepare them for the projects that they do. The after-school activities include setting goals, helping with the planning, visiting the intern, the actual internships, where, the placements, where the students are. So, that has to take place after school because the teachers are teaching all day, and so they actually see where the students are going, what they're going to be doing for their projects. They help them to plan it, and some of the difficulties that students have are, you know, persisting and figuring out what to do next. You know, anytime you're starting your first independent kind of project that you're doing on your own, and actually, you know, where you're going to, the kind of situation you're going to be at a work setting, there are obstacles, there are issues that you face. And the role of the, of the teachers in this type of program are to help them with that, to also meet the people they're working with. So, it's, it's, there are multiple things that they, that they will do in this, and this is only for hours worked after, and it's a, the curriculum rate of $50 an hour.
And this is focused on the second half of the year?
The second half of the year.
Or at the end of the year after AP exams?
No, they do it through the whole second-
The whole second half?
Yes, the whole second half of the year. Some of the students do their work after school, some of the students go to work during the school day in their senior year. They're flexible at different times.
I-
There are 17 students in the program this year.
Yes.
We are hoping, you know, probably, for the two teachers, probably a maximum of 30 students, because they teach the students in their classes, they have these students in the class, so you'd look at around 30. It's not that they are doing this together in a classroom, they have separate, separate classrooms, but they work together with the students on, on these projects.
I was, I, I think it's a great program. I was very happy to attend a couple of the presentations at the end of last year. I, I just thought it was a great process that the students went through. I was just, some of them, you know, my recollection is a little foggy, some of them, I wasn't sure that they actually had a job site that they were going to, but more, they were doing sort of a project. I can be wrong on that, I don't know.
That's true. Some of them are doing projects, some of them have job sites.
Right, right.
Even with the projects they're doing, they're doing them out of school, and in different types of things that the teachers are helping them, and primarily, it's the process. For, when I look at this program, I see an opportunity for a student who's about to go to college to have a little preview of what it's like to be an independent learner. You know, as you know, when you send your child off to college, they have to quickly learn how to navigate things and figure things out, and this is a little help for them as they navigate this project as a way to think, how are you going to think about what you're doing and about your work? They also explore their interests and see whether this is something they want to pursue. Some of our students have actually found this is a passion, they have a particular passion for, for example, film, filmmaking, and they go at it, and it becomes a life, a lifelong career. So, this is our real, really, a startup, you know? I call it a startup. And the first time you do something, there are rough patches, and you learn. For example, they learned, these teachers learned from the first year about how to structure it more clearly and helpfully for the students, to make sure that the students actually feel that they have done something successfully. Because some of the students had real difficulties with that.
I, I, I hope that it, that, you know, the after-school would enhance it, and I guess we're treating it as a club after-school.
It's like a club.
Like a club after-school.
In this, this part of it. But, it's, it varies, you know, depending on the needs.
I would hope that our, our goal is to move more and more to be internships rather than independent study.
Yes.
And that's a matter of building a network of places that will receive our kids. You know, maybe Natalie has, Natalie in her hospital days, you know, there's, there's parts, for different parts of the operation that can connect those dots, but I think there's, that's, I think that's gotta be an important part of it, that this is not really designed to be independent study, because if you want to do independent study, you can go into science research.
Yes.
Or you could be going into the STEM, because that's independent. So, I, I think, you know, that's gotta be kind of more the focus. And if you're saying 18 for this year?
Eighteen, eighteen, yes.
Eighteen, that, that's, you know, just, you know, 15% of the class?
We'd like it to be at least 30.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, the goal with these programs is to provide unique opportunities for students to get into, to explore something that has some special meaning for them. And I, you know, the issue of finding internships, that's a difficult one in this particular area, and what they're trying to do now with this group is also develop an alumni associ- So, in other words, the students who went through it last year have some, some good information for these students. They're trying to build that network. As these students move on to college, too, they can offer some help as well. So, it's, it's, it's a growing program.
And then, based on what this type of end that we're doing now, can these teachers be involved in helping find internships?
Yes, they're doing that.
Not just visiting the sites, but actually seeking them out?
They are looking. They actually go out and look. They actually make contacts, make calls, you know, they're helping them. And actually, they're helping the students to do that, because it's really very important for the students to learn how to make those contacts. They're supporting them in that. But, looking for that network is really, really important. And we ask community members who may have some, you know, some opportunities for these students to, to let us know.
Is this available to kids who now go to BOCs that are already kind of going down career paths already over there?
It could be, yes.
It can be, okay. Just want to make sure the timing would work for them.
I think it might. I mean, I think we'd have to look at that, because the classes are scheduled in a certain way, but we certainly are open to being more flexible, too. That's something we talked about today. We had a meeting about it, actually, about, you know, changing some of the course times and looking at schedules.
Okay. So, there's nothing on the agenda. Can we move on to new business? All right, Mr. Furrow, please, number one.
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Kathleen Tanner, the District, for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June 30, 2017, as per document number 90/17 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? And we usually honor our retirees at a later meeting, correct? So, we will certainly do that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of William Bracken from the District for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June 23, 2016, as per document number 110/17 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I have a comment. We need to correct that. It says June 23, 2016.
Seventeen, sir.
It should say seventeen.
Second, as amended.
Okay. And questions or comments? Again, celebration and acknowledgement of all that all of our retirees have done, but Mr. Bracken's been here a very long time and is a fixture on our grounds. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Lawrence Gibbs from the District for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June 30, 2017, as per document number 111/17 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent Schools to accept the resignation of Annie DiGigorio from her position of teacher aide in the District to accept a four-year probationary term appointment as a teaching assistant in the District effective October 31, 2016, as per document 112/17 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? And this is our, do you want to discuss this?
Yes, I thought we'd do the second one.
We'll be here number five.
And then-
Okay, we'll just, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stay tuned. Number five.
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools that the Board appoints Annie DiGigorio to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on October 31, 2016, and terminating October 31, 2020, in the teaching assistant tenure area, at an annual compensation in the amount of $26,000, step one of the CSEA teacher assistant salary schedule for existing employees, prorated in accordance with the PVCSD policy 9250. Ms. DiGigorio holds-
Giorgio.
Teaching assistant certification.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes, I'd like to, this is a special moment. Anna DiGiorgio is here this evening, and as our very first teacher assistant with her family.
Let's come up and shake our hands.
Let's vote first.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, resoundingly.
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board appoints Jennifer Franz to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on October 31, 2016, and terminating on October 31, 2020, in the teaching assistant tenure area, at annual compensation in the amount of $23,240, step three of the CSEA teacher assistant salary schedule for new employees, prorated and in accordance with PVCSD policy 9250. Ms. Franz holds teaching assistant certification.
Second.
Questions or comments?
And Ms. Franz is here, and she is our first new employee, although Ms. Franz has substitute, uh, to, uh, has been a substitute aide for us for a while, and substitute teacher. She is here this evening as our second teacher assistant, and she is a new employee.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both at, both at the elementary school, yes.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to enter into an agreement with KGND for an elementary school and middle school capacity study, as per document number 108/17 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
What this is for the audience is we're hiring this company to look to see how many classes, if we want to keep the same programs, can we have, like, let's just say, instead of having four years at what we call the junior high school, can we have five there? Or can we have six grades instead of the five that we have at the elementary school? As we start thinking about transportation and things like that, are we getting the most out of our buildings? So, keeping the programs, can we move grades around in these things? And that's what they're gonna be looking at.
It's just information for us in making these decisions.
Right, they're just getting information and not making decisions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the Term of Supplemental Memorandum of Agreement dated October 27, 2016, between the District and the Putnam Valley Federation of Teachers, as presented to the Board at this meeting, a copy of which agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting, as per document 109/17.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is for off-site tutoring. This is just confirming what the teachers would get when they were hired as tutors through the District.
Okay. Number nine.
Resolved to accept the Fiscal External Audit Report and Management Letter for the year ending June 2016 for the Putnam Valley Central School District, as per document number 117/16 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting, completed by Bennett Kielson Storch DeSantis, a division of O'Connor Davies Muntz and Dobbins, the independent external auditors for the District.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve the Consent Agenda Items 2 through 20, as presented to the Board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving CSC CPSC placements. We're approving a family medical leave act. We're accepting a generous donation from the Scott Pelletier Fund. He was a student who passed away, and there's a fund in his name, and they're giving some money to us. We're approving a health and welfare contract with the Newishell School District for five of our students who attend private schools in Newishell. of our students who attend private schools in Newishell. We're appointing Pat Bellino as our Chief Emergency Officer for Emergency Service Coordinator for the State of New York. We're noting that the Niagara Bank is now called Key Bank, and we're going to be using Key Bank instead of Niagara, so we're making a note of that. We're approving 12 agreements with providers of special services for our students with special needs. We are appointing the PSAT test practice and permitting him to work up to seven hours. We're approving longevity payments for three teachers, graduate credits for 10, and in-service credits for 30. We're approving the mentors for the High School Journey Program, we're approving a substitute teacher list, we're approving Health and Welfare Help Night, we're approving High School Help Night, the teachers who Help Night for three teachers, we're approving winter coaches and their salaries, we're approving the leaders for the Freshman Foundation Group, which you heard about, we're approving agreement with the Pleasantville School District for one of our students who attends school in Pleasantville. We're accepting the resignation of the head mentor for the high school, because this person's now coaching, he doesn't have time to continue as head mentor, and we're amending the motion for paying for the videographer, the gentleman back there, who is now an employee of the District and no longer a consultant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now I'd like to open it up to public contribution or to anybody on the Board about any item or any topic at all. Okay. If there are none, I would like to resolve to convene an executive session for 13, for the purposes of discussing 13 matters of the employment history of 13 particular persons, and a discussion of three matters of potential litigation, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody, have a lovely evening, and happy Halloween.
And get out and vote.
We should say that about having a safe Halloween.
Have a safe and happy Halloween.
Yes, please.